Time is now six oh one PM. Calling to order the meeting of the Warwick School Committee on the construction projects for the new high schools. It's Tuesday, January twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty five. Filling in for Ms. Tedeschi tonight is Ms. French. Ms. French, would you please call the roll to determine we have a quorum? Present. Five members of the committee present. We have a quorum. At this time, I ask that we all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. There are two matters of business before this committee this evening. There will be no public comment before those matters. The first item is a discussion presentation, construction update of the new high schools by Left Field. So that's being presented, I believe, by Mr. Spiegel up on the stage. Tonight, I want to thank everybody for just working with us. This is the first time that we've had a forum in this type of setting or configuration. So it's new to us as it is to all of you. So bear with us. Off to the left here, we have a panel of several experts and many people involved intimately with the project. Off to the right, we have a podium that will be available for public comment after both of the presentations that are expected to take place between twenty to twenty-five minutes of the initial start of this meeting. So the members of the public will come up and they can take their time to just provide initial comments, or they can ask questions to the presenters this evening or members of the panel that are present. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Spiegel.
Mic check? Okay, great. Good evening, everyone. Chris Spiegel with Left Field Project Management. I'm a project executive and one of a five-member team from Left Field that helps to manage and provide leadership over the Warwick High School replacement projects. With me this evening, as Chairman Galligan said, we have a team of experts. We have representatives from our construction manager, Dimeo. We have representatives from both of the architectural design teams, SOM Architecture and Secoshio and Associates. And as you can see, we have a number of other specialists representing major disciplines on the project, including civil engineering, structural engineering, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing engineering. It is our hope that members of this team will be able to answer any specific questions you have during the course of this meeting. However, there may be very highly technical questions that we would probably need more time to study in order to make sure that we're giving a very accurate answer. And those situations, we will let you know. But we also want to encourage everyone that there is a website available for you to ask questions about this project. We have received two questions so far. We provide highly detailed answers to questions that come through that portal. So if anybody has any additional questions, please, we encourage you to submit them to the project website. It also has notices of public meetings and other things like that. The drawings are available on there. So it's a great resource for anyone who really wants to learn more about the project. So tonight on the agenda, we'll be talking about budget schedule. We will do a design overview. Then we're going to invite Director Ricks from Athletics to come up and give an update on their program, and then we'll come back to questions and answers. There we go. So I'm not going to belay the inflation point. I think everybody in here is aware that we are going through an unprecedented period of inflation. This is simply an inflation calculator. This is not specific to construction. In fact, construction is significantly higher, and we presented that at a previous school committee meeting. This is just to take a look at a three hundred and fifty million dollar purchase in two thousand and twenty-one. In two thousand and twenty-five, we're looking at a four hundred and five, one seven eight, two four eight. That's a fifteen point eight percent cumulative rate of construction, and this does use the government's cost performance indicator data. Up until January fifteenth, we have to wait till February twelfth for the next. I'm not going to belabor this point. I think everybody knows the inflation situation that we're dealing with over the last five years. This is just to help provide some context to that. So when we came before this group back in October, we felt it was prudent and in the owner's interest to make the owner aware and the general public aware that we were experiencing what we believed at that time was a worst-case scenario of a thirty-seven point eight million dollar budget shortfall. It is in our responsibility to provide that fiscal information to allow the town, the city, the school department, to start having conversations about what it might take if extra funding was needed for this project. As we set up that meeting, that was a worst-case scenario, and our team represented here was going to go back and turn over every single stone that we could turn over and look for ways to bring the cost of this project down without sacrificing your educational programming spaces. The designs that you see today do just that. They have not, the educational programming scope has not changed from that October meeting. It has not changed from the school committee approvals when we submitted our projects to the Rhode Island Department of Education. We have been able to bring the cost of this overrun down to twenty-two point nine million through a number of cost-saving implication measures. Here are some examples of those. The first was a reconfiguration of the Tollgate basement. Why is a reconfigure of a basement worth so much money? Well, if anybody's been to the Tollgate site, you'll know that there's a lot of ledge or exposed bedrock. You'll know that the site undulates, pretty significant grade changes. What does that mean? Long story short, it costs a lot of money for us to go deep into the ground. So any way that we can remove deep digging into the ground is going to save this project money. The architectural team with the support of Dimeo has really figured out a great way to reduce the size of that basement while not decreasing educational programs. So that's one. We also simplified the superstructure. I am not a professional engineer. We have professional engineers on our team that are happy to speak to this, but essentially we were able to simplify the steel superstructure to save significant money. We also performed a constructibility review. A constructibility review is when third-party experts take a look at all of your drawings, the way that you are proposing to build this school, and say, you know what, this window detail, how you plan on installing this window, if we were just to change this one little way that it's being installed, you could save five hundred dollars on every window. And when you're talking about thousands of windows and across an entire school, it adds up. So the constructibility review was completed, and we found, again, more ways that we could install details and build the school for slightly smaller bits of money on individual elements of the project, and that allows that over the entire course of the project to significantly multiply. Also, another reason that the cost has come down is we've advanced the drawings. When we presented our thirty-seven point eight million dollars, we were looking at a schematic design set. Since then, we have moved into the design development phase of the project. Essentially, what we've done is we've been more fine-tuning these drawings, which allows the people that estimate the projects to remove assumptions about costs. When you have more detail, your numbers get better refined. That's been a significant way that we've been able to move these drawings, move this price down. We're also looking at site balancing. As I mentioned before, digging on sites that have a lot of ledge that are severely graded costs a lot of money. But more importantly, when you dig on a site, that's not providing value to students. Students are going to take advantage of how we balance a site. If we can figure out how to move dirt around better, if that's shifting a building and half an inch this way or raising one elevation, a quarter of an inch that way, that means that that's tons of material that we no longer have to take off of the site. All of that material needs to be paid to be disposed of. So Dimeo performed a very significant cut-fill analysis. We looked at how we were placing the buildings on the site, and we tried to figure out where can we move these buildings, shift very slightly, so that we can save money in dirt. Bottom line, less dirt that we move, the less money that these projects cost. We also completed our consultant procurement. So besides the team that you see here, there's a number of other consultants that work on these projects. Some of them are international building code requirements. Some of them are Rhode Island Department of Education requirements. Having said that, we had a very significant public bid process. All of these were public solicitations, and we were able to realize significant cost savings and come in significantly under budget than what we were projecting. It is always our job to be conservative with these numbers. We want to make sure that we're not stealing from educational scope to pay for soft costs. We're happy to report that we came in approximately five million dollars under our projections. That savings is going back into the buildings. So that's something that we're pretty proud of on this job. We're roughly tracking about fifteen percent on our soft costs. Industry average is twenty percent. So we think that's an accomplishment of the team as well. So again, twenty-two point nine is where we currently are, but what makes up that twenty-two point nine? Let's take a look here. So in terms of our estimated cost to build both schools, we're looking at three eleven, six fifty, two sixty-three. And remember, this is not a third-party number. This is what our construction manager, who is responsible to sign a guaranteed maximum price for this work, has told us this is what the project is going to cost. So this isn't up in the air. This is what they have said this project is going to cost. As you can see here, we did not touch your furniture fixtures and equipment budget. We did not touch your technology budget. At eleven point nine million, those remain unchanged. Your current owner's soft costs, this is where we're showing that favorable bid results, thirty-two, one eighty-three. And the owner's contingency, this is very important, that twenty-two point nine million dollar that I, number that I showed you, that number includes over seventeen million dollars of cash, of unallocated contingency money. Why is it important to leave that unallocated cash in the project at this point? Because of unknowns that we have with these difficult sites, because of unknowns we have with soil conditions. We cannot drill a hole every single four inches on a site. We need to make sure that we're protecting the owner against any unforeseen conditions so we do not end up in a situation like you may have seen publicized in other parts of Rhode Island, where they run into unsuitable soils, they run into ledge, and now they have to steal money from their construction budget to cover those cost overruns. There is a good chance that some of this owner's contingency will go back into the project. In fact, I'm certain that it will. But at this point, I am not comfortable releasing that seventeen million dollars to try to make up a budget shortfall, because that could put us in a potential situation where further down the line, a year from now, I am now having to cut scope in order to fund an unforeseen condition. I would much rather be able to come back to you in a year and say, you know what, we had seventeen million, we only spent seven million of it, here's ten million. If you look at our project total, with our project total budget, again, this is our project variance, twenty-two point nine million. If we take a look at what this means in a cost per square foot basis, this is also something that we're very proud of. And remember, our numbers have been signed off from our construction manager. These aren't out in the third-party world. These are signed off on by our CM. Central Falls High School was bid in two thousand and twenty-three. That came in at seven hundred and fifteen dollars a square foot. That is a hard number. Central Falls High School is a four-story school on a postage stamp of a site. Pilgrim is coming in right now at seven hundred and two dollars a square foot. Tollgate is coming in at seven hundred and sixty-four dollars a square foot. Why is there a significant difference between Tollgate and Pilgrim? Because of the site. Pilgrim, we're building largely on a very flat area. Tollgate, again, a lot of exposed bedrock and severe grade changes throughout the site. Pawtucket High School, early look at those numbers are seven sixty-five, is what the rumor mill is putting out. And if you look at South Kingstown High School project that Left Field manages, you're looking at seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars a square foot. What we're trying to tell you is that, though, year and a half that we have spent working and digging into this project, talking to leadership about what they would accept and what they would not accept, has resulted in incredibly cost-efficient school at seven hundred and two dollars a square foot and seven hundred and sixty-four dollars a square foot for a very difficult site. Schedule. Week of April twenty-first is when we're currently tracking for construction to kick off at Pilgrim High School. Following that would be Tollgate. May, the main reason for this slip in schedule has to do with some Department of Environmental reviews that we need to go through, since we found some new wetlands on site that we're adapting to. The move-in date of summer two thousand and twenty-seven, of July and August, has not With that, I'd like to invite Michael Van Hamel and Steve Guglielmo to come up and present their plans for the Warwick School, Warwick, excuse me, Tollgate School.
Good evening, everyone. Again, my name is Steve Guglielmo, principal architect with Secoshio and Associates, and Okay, so this is obviously the site. Just to orient yourselves on this site, this road here is coming in from one seventeen. Okay, that's the road that comes into the site. This lower parking lot area here is currently where the students park, and it extends all the way back into this area here. These black dash lines that you see here around this location is the existing school, okay? So what we're planning on doing in this lower-level area is to create a student parking lot in this location, right in front of the CTC building. We're adding a baseball field, a softball field, and we have a concessions building right between both of them. We're also renovating the CTC building. We'll show you some plans on that in a few minutes. And then this building here is a new pre-engineered metal building that will house the marine welding technology for the CTC programs. So coming up this road, all the way up, this is coming around to the front of the high school. This is the new high school. We have a south entrance here, and the north is the main entrance here. We have a parking lot on the side here for sixty-five parking spaces. This is where the smaller buses will drop off and pick up. This is an entrance for the special education area, and there's some additional teacher parking in this location. The road between the CTC building and the high school will be maintained and retained as the bus drop-off and pickup for the high school, and the students would come into this lower entrance by this stairwell here. Coming up to the main parking lot, we have a parent drop-off and pickup in this location, just at this circle, and we have another hundred and seventy-eight parking spaces back here for the teachers and various other staff and visitors. So that's a hundred and seventy-eight parking spaces in this location. North of that, we have a new practice field going in here, okay? This is the wetlands area that Chris alluded to that is causing us some problems. So we reconfigured some of the parking, and now we have most of the parking right in front of the building here. We used to have some parking in here, but because of wetlands issues, we had to just reconfigure this area here. This is the new football stadium here, obviously. We have some field events around the perimeter of the field. We do have some tennis courts at the Winman School up here that we're refurbishing, so that's part of the project also. This field belongs to Winman School, and we're not going to be doing anything with that for the high school, okay? So with that, I'll go to the next slide, which is the floor plans. This is the first floor plan of the new school. This being the north entrance to the school where the teacher parking lot is. Come in the main entrance, you have auditorium on your left. We have the guidance, nurse, and administration on the right, special education department in this location here. This is the exit and entrance I talked about where the small buses would line up here. So special education has their own entrance and exit right on this location here. Coming down through the main corridor of the building, we have a media center. We have a learning stair and a dining commons along this west end of the main spine. Across from that, we have our gymnasium, all the support spaces in the back, which are the locker rooms and toilet rooms. These two spaces that are in yellow are actually the toilet rooms for the stadium, which is directly across from that area. And we have a concessions area here for the stadium also, built in the back of the school, so it's easy access from the stadium to the back of this area. Moving further south in the building, we have a woodworking shop here, wrestling, dance, and aerobics room adjacent. This is all back-of-house support, mechanical, electrical, custodial space. The orange that you see here is all kitchen and servery for the cafeteria. And then we have a small learning community here on the first floor that houses all the core academics, some resource rooms. We have science rooms and art rooms that make up the learning community here. And we also have some of the, this is a teacher hub area and commons for the students. And every wing will have their separate toilet rooms. We have teacher-staff toilet rooms here, student toilet rooms here. Going to the second floor, we basically have the same configurations for the learning communities. So we have, again, core academics, science, art, resource rooms, teacher hub, toilet rooms, and the like. Same thing at the north wing. So we have learning communities that have the same basic spaces within each learning community. Across from this area, we have the weight room. We have a fitness studio here. We have two health rooms. And up here, we have a robotics space as part of the tech programs, and we have some conference rooms and other resource rooms along this area here. This space here that you see, that tan space, is actually a control room for the auditorium, Going up to the third level, again, we have another learning community, same layout. We have tech ed and CTC spaces, science and core academic classrooms, resource rooms. This is a vice principal's office here, and graphic arts department, which is part of the CTC or the tech programs that is off this main area behind the elevator. The lower level, and I know Chris alluded to it a little bit, but this area here used to house the marine and welding and woodshop woodworking. So in an effort to save costs, we took that space, we split it up, we put part of it in the main building, which is the woodshop. You noticed that it was up in this location on the first floor. And then we took the marine welding, and we put it across the CTC road, right next to the CTC building, where we were building them a metal building to house that program. So it was a pretty decent savings to make that move, okay? This is the secondary entrance that we talked about from the buses drop-off at the CTC roadway that the students would enter and exit from this area. We have an SRO office right by the doorway here. We have some book storage spaces for the building. We have an elevator here and an extra-wide stairwell for the students coming in and out of the building to the buses. This is the CTC building, just to give you a quick overview on what we're doing here. The lower level, we have maintained and retained the automotive area, carpentry and electrical CTC programs. The culinary arts and restaurant will remain. We're renovating these spaces. We're also renovating some spaces across the hall here. The toilet rooms are getting renovated. This is going to be a new storage space for these programs here. And then this purple area here is the new building that we're building next door to house the marine welding program that we talked about. So it makes sense to put it here. We've got a connector that connects the two buildings, and it seems to work very well in this location. The second floor of the building, we're going to retain but renovate the cosmetology space, which is this light purple area. We have health occupations going in this location where we had graphic arts and CAD earlier. So this is a generous space for the health occupations. And we're also renovating toilet rooms in this building, renovating the office area. And this area here would be the CTC literacy classroom, and this is a spare classroom that we have in this building. So with that, that wraps up the Tollgate High School. Oh, I'm sorry. We do have some renderings, the exterior renderings of the building. This is the front rendering of the main entrance. We're using brick metal panels, and actually, this here is a two-tone, two different type of brick here, but most of the building is metal panel and brick. This is a view from the open courtyard. And this is a view looking from the lower field area up at the school, the upper rendering here. And this is looking at the back of the school that faces the football field, and this is what you see from the football field area. This is the press box. We have the bleachers, and obviously, you can see the school in the background. And that concludes Tollgate High School.
Thank you. Before you step away, just so for the interest of time for the public, maybe we'll just, any questions for members of the committee for Secoshio on Tollgate? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. To present SOM, we have Katie Kernison.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Katie Kernison. I'm with SOM Architecture, Senior Associate there. Thank you for having me tonight. I'll be presenting Pilgrim High School, status of the design. Oh, I'm in charge of this. That's right. Okay, so just a look back quickly at where it all started with visioning. If you all recall, I'm sure you've seen these diagrams before, the visioning adjacency diagram, which was developed with the district. Some of the ideas that came out of that were a twenty-first century learning-based, so developing these small learning communities that are clusters of different types of classroom spaces. spaces to encourage cross-curricular activities as well as break down the large enrollment numbers of the school. To have, there was a desire within the district to have a strong community hub in the center of the building, as well as a front-facing auditorium easily accessible by the public and the proximity of the gymnasium to the sports fields. So, from this sort of abstracted diagram, we developed a concept diagram, which looks, starts to look like more of a building. And you can see those small learning community clusters separated from the more public common spaces via this activated spine that runs down the center of the building. Give it a second. So, this is, remains a two-story building. Pilgrim High School is a two-story building, and you won't see too much of a difference in terms of the floor plan and the planning. We've been working closely with our consultants to create some efficiencies in the plan and sort of streamline materials and systems. And so, this is sort of the evolution of where we're at today with design development. So, you'll see this public, oop, sorry. This public entry to the south here at one end of the spine and the school entry at the north here. The central spine connects those two, and it really becomes this activated dynamic space, not only for circulation but also for programming. It contains the double-height spaces of the learning and the dining commons. You can see that the small learning communities are still interdisciplinary, the many colors of the different classroom programs, and that the administrative, the green administrative spaces are also decentralized so that there's sort of checkpoints allocated to the beginning of those small learning communities, as well as some teacher planning embedded within them. You can also see the strong prominent massing of the auditorium facing Pilgrim Parkway to the south here. It's also adjacent to that main public entrance. On level two, you can see these Xs. And so, two of the primary concepts that came out of visioning were making horizontal and vertical connections, so not only for equity and inclusivity amongst students, but also for safety. So, some examples of horizontal connections were our clear sightlines throughout the building, and this emphasizes wayfinding and safety and security. Eyes on the street, so some horizontal connections of those administrative spaces overlooking the common spaces of the building for extra security enforcements. And then, exterior views, so students benefit from being able to see outside and to see the sky and the trees. And so, we've tried to open up the building as much as possible while maintaining sort of standard window systems and connect students with outdoor learning and outdoor fitness. Vertical connections, like the Xs here, provide equity between second floor to first floor. So, whatever programs happening on the first floor, second floor sort of cohorts are connected, both within their small learning community as well as to the common spaces. So, there's program for the gymnasium and the auditorium on level two as well as direct connections. So, here's the site plan. Again, it remains fairly similar to what you last seen. The existing building is dashed here in red. The new building will be built just east of the existing building to maintain operation throughout construction. The primary entrance to the site, vehicular entrance, is here in the center. Buses queue up along the north side for that student, main student entrance to the north, whereas cars kind of loop around and have a drop-off queuing towards the south here and either exit out towards the southeast, or, sorry, I think they both exit out towards southeast. Following the construction on the east side here and the demolition of the existing building, the new stadium will be built in replace of the existing building along with various other sports fields, and I'll show you an aerial of that. So, I'm just going to flip through a couple points. So, in addition to the parking that we're already providing, we've allocated some future additional parking spaces. So, looking at 46 future spaces towards the east and the north. Here's that new state-of-the-art turf football, track-and-field stadium facilities. As a cost-saving measure, we actually looked at reusing the existing annex building for concessions, toilets, and lockers. In addition to the five, the four refurbished tennis courts, we're adding a fifth one for equity between the two schools and for general use by the tennis team. And then, the new baseball and softball fields, they'll have their correct sort of solar orientation, and those will be brand-new. There is an allocated practice field adjacent to the stadium, the outdoor fitness, as I'd mentioned, adjacent to the gymnasium, and then overflow recreational area, sort of this leftover grass area. We have those accessible courtyards between the small learning community wings. Those also contain dining. And here are some 3D views of where we're at in terms of the design as it stands today. Again, we've been working closely with the consultants to sort of finesse the building systems, the acoustics within the building, maintain ceiling heights and widths of corridors. You can see the gymnasium, the auditorium views here, gymnasium on the left with that clear sightline out to the sports fields. The auditorium has been evolving with all of the infrastructure that's involved in auditorium buildings. Those double-height spaces within that central spine of the dining and the learning commons, you can see the two dining commons views on the left here with some sort of activated display space and exposed structure for the building to act as a teaching tool for the students. And then, the learning commons here on the right, which also shows those administrative spaces overlooking the common spaces for added security. Just a few more slides. We have updated learning wing and outdoor learning courtyard images. So, these are those double-height spaces at the ends of the small learning communities, bringing daylighting into the sort of meat of the building. Cross-curricular activities with the school garden in the courtyard and some of the CTC program extending out into the garden, or into the courtyard, excuse me. And then, we have a high bay learning wing as well. So, we've been working really closely with the users to talk about adjacencies, efficiencies, and the way that the, some of these workshops in CTC spaces work, whether it's, you know, a separate space for instruction and a messy space for making, whether they're double-height or need longer or taller spaces. And then, an updated main public entrance view. We've been studying the exterior material, looking at cost-effective materials. So, this is a brick which has durability and longevity as well. And that's what I have for you all tonight.
And just a couple notes before we invite Director Rix up. So, for those of you that have been paying attention, drawings don't look too much different, do they? And that, again, goes back to the work that we've been doing to really nail down every single detail of this project, to not compromise educational scope. So, most of the changes that we made are going to be unfelt, unseen by students and teachers, those types of things. And then, I just wanted to say one thing, Sean. The website address for those that are interested is WarwickHSprojects dot com. Again, that's WarwickHSprojects dot com. You can click on the Frequently Asked Questions tab, and there's a link right at the very front if you want to get in contact with us and submit a question. So, again, that's WarwickHSprojects dot com.
Don't run off on me. Our last presenter did. Are there any questions for members of the committee on the Pilgrim designs, so that way we can move past this portion of the meeting? Ms. Hazelwood?
I want to ask both, actually, something else, too. Thank you. When we're renovating the CTC areas, where will the students be while those renovations are taking place?
So, the CTC building, we're envisioning, we're working with DMEO for scheduling on laying out all the schedules and phasing, but we see the CTC building work being done over the summertime.
So, it has to be complete during the summer?
Yes.
Okay.
It'll take, it'll take more than one summer to do all the CTC work.
Okay.
But, we're planning on doing it in the summer months when the students are not there.
Okay. And I have a question. At Pilgrim, the CTC will have lifesaver in early childhood, is that correct?
Amongst others, but yes, those two are included. Electronics, robotics, I'm really testing my memory. Can we pull up the plate? Aviation.
Okay. So, those will be moved over?
Correct. Some will be relocated, yes.
And that'll be all built together? There was something else. That's it right for right now. Oh, the transition programs at both high schools, where are those housed within the That's for the 18 to 22 special education students?
Yes. That program was scheduled to go into the CTC building, but now it's not in the program.
Okay, so, is it, it's going somewhere in one of the schools, correct?
It's not in either school. I don't know who can speak to that.
I certainly can't answer that question.
It was removed from the program.
I can't ask you any further than, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the committee with questions regarding Pilgrim? Seeing none, thank you all. We are now through the portion of the meeting discussion presentation on the update of the new high schools, and we will turn it over to a discussion update on athletics during construction as presented by Mr. Rix.
Good evening, everyone. I asked to stand at the lower podium. I banged up my knee pretty good, so I can use the podium to kind of balance a little better. So, with the construction of the new school set to begin in the spring of '25, many of the public schools' outdoor athletic teams are going to be displaced. I think, you know, we all got excited about having the new schools, and a lot of us thought about, okay, that's great, but we forgot that these teams are going to have to move a little bit, too, to accommodate the building. So, in an effort to minimize in travel and inconvenience of the teams being displaced, I was able to work with Mr. Gothberg and his crew, Leftfield, DMEO, and try to give us the best opportunity for our athletes to stay close by and have the best facilities as possible. I was also able to work with Bev Wiley and Holly Weber from Parks and Recreation, and Holly's the recreational coordinator. Mr. Gothberg had set up a meeting for us, for me to speak with, the DMEO team, because one of our bigger concerns was with Pilgrim High School baseball and finding a location for them. And I'll go on as to where, what our plans are at this time, and also to find out what the Tollgate facilities are going to be like and when we're going to start construction. And they were able to show you on the previous slides when the approximate construction dates are going to come into play. Originally, we were under the assumption that we were going to have to have our teams play off-campus for the entirety of the spring. But, after speaking with everybody, we were able to keep our teams at their schools for as long as possible. And someone that was very helpful with that, too, was Mark Jakeworth. He's a Warwick guy who's working for DMEO, whose kid plays sports, and he realized the complexity of, especially with baseball, and the facilities that we have to offer here in Warwick, that if we could keep our team there as long as possible, it would be beneficial. So, over the next few years, the community has to be flexible. You have to understand that the scheduling is going to be flexible. We're going to have our facility set. We have a plan in place that I've worked on with many stakeholders, but it is subject to change, okay? Depending on facilities and what's available and what becomes unavailable and stuff like that. But, the one thing that's definitely going to happen is they're going to be displaced. So, here's what's going to happen in the spring. For Tollgate, as you see, they, we put up on the slides that it's a May start date for construction, okay? That was outstanding for us. As a result of this, we are going to be able to have both the boys and girls track and fields and boys and girls lacrosse able to practice and play their home contests at the Tollgate facility itself. However, there will be some modifications and stipulations, okay? Construction at the Tollgate facility will begin, you know, in early May, but they're going to start with the demolition of Drum Rock Elementary School. And as a result of that, the access roads that come up to the Tollgate facility are going, are not going to be available to us. So, as a result of that, we will have our teams and athletes parked behind the Windman School, and they'll have a slighter increase in walk to the field, but the fans that come up to the games and stuff will have parking and access to the field, okay? But, not in the normal way that they normally have. The Tollgate baseball teams will practice at, and play their games at Warwick Vets as they have in the past. The Varsity will play all of their games there, and the JV team will play some of their games there, with some being played at the Mickey Stevens Sports Complex together. And usually, the Tollgate baseball teams practice together, JV and Varsity. Tollgate softball has always played off-campus, and they're all set with their fields. So, Pilgrim High School with the construction going on, again, the date was given to us was April the 21st. So, track and field, boys and girls lacrosse, and baseball will be able to utilize the Pilgrim facility up until that date. There may be some construction, storage areas and stuff, but we've been told that they will keep that out of the way so the athletes can use these facilities. So, allowing the teams to use these facilities is going to prove very beneficial. March and April are really the two most formative months for spring sports, for developing and getting your plays in and stuff. And when you get more towards late April and May, it's basically maintenance of what you've already taught. So, when the teams will have to leave that facility and play off-campus after April 21st, they'll at least have the majority of their stuff in place before they go to play their games. And there are fewer practices, and if not fewer than shorter practices, as we get into the later part of the schedule, late April and May. Post-April 21st, Pilgrim baseball team is going to play the remainder of their Varsity baseball games at Warwick Vets Middle School. I was able to go through the schedules that I have in the spring and facilitate in a way that they could play their games on that field. It's a quality field, and I feel is the best field in the city for baseball at this point. They're going to have to split their practice times, both at the Vets facility, Mickey Stevens Sports Complex, and the two batting cage facilities that are indoors at Pilgrim. The junior Varsity games will play their games at the Mickey Stevens Sports Complex. Again, that's to date, subject to change, but it's a pretty good spot to start. The Pilgrim boys and the girls lacrosse teams will continue to practice at their current facilities, which is Alders Junior High School and the North Country Club Field, and they'll replay their remaining home games at the Ben Street Fields. Excellent. Okay. Fall sports of 2025. Again, we're thinking a whole, you know, season off, but it was never too early to stop planning because the construction will be in full swing by the fall, and I just want to let everybody know there is a tentative plan in place for those sports teams at this point. Tollgate, you know, that's perhaps going to be the biggest challenge for Tollgate football, okay? With the equipment that they have, sleds, their storage facilities, the equipment that they use, it's going to have to be transported somewhere. So, right now, we're looking at and considering three different alternatives. The Tollgate head football coach, Misselli, has been looking at the facilities to see what might best fit his needs. But, right now, we're looking at either the Gorton facility, the old football field across from Gorton that Warwick Powell currently uses at nights and for practices, the Warwick Vets facility where Tollgate will play their home football games as they have for the last couple of years. There is an area where the Vets coaches used to practice, where the There is an area where the Vets coaches used to practice, where the track and field throwing area is, and the outskirts of the softball field. They've lost a little bit of that room since the Vets teams practiced there when they fenced in the softball field. So Coach needs to take a look at that and see if it'll be adequate for what he needs for, you know, basic drills, line drills and sled work and stuff like that. And he's also going to look at the quad that's out here for Warwick Vets and see if that's usable, and he'll look at that also. And then ideally, we would like to try to keep them on campus, but the only real spot on campus that'll be left is the Winman Facility, the field up behind Women, Winman, and, but currently that's used by our middle school boys and girl soccer teams. So balancing that time in a non-lighted facility could be very, you know, troublesome. So I do have a meeting set up tomorrow with Principal Calori and Principal Haywood, just to put our minds together. But as I said, this is kind of an ongoing thing, but there is a plan in place for Tollgate's football. As far as field hockey and soccer, field hockey will utilize their normal practice facility at the bottom part of the CCRI campus, and their home games will be played at Warwick Vets Middle School in the same area that they played them last year in the outfield of the baseball field. Boys and girls soccer, they will basically be doing what they did last year. The boy soccer team will practice and play their home soccer games at Warwick Vets Middle School, as they've done the past, and the girls team will practice at City Park Soccer Field and play their home games at Ben Street Fields, the same as they did last year. So not a lot of big changes for that as of, and at this time, the tennis courts are not going to be under construction, so girls tennis should be fine with that. And cross country, I spoke with the coaches, and they can feel like they can continue to run the road areas on campus in the hills and utilize some of the area where CCRI is in the space behind Winman to conduct their workouts. As far as football for Pilgrim, they are going to practice on campus. They will be able to practice in the general area that they've used in the past, although the construction group has to put some of their materials for building in a portion of that area, so what they will do is fill in with some loom the area near the track and field throwing area where normally they would have the hammer or shot put divots, those will be all smoothed out with, with loom to make sure there's no problems, and they'll just have to modify their practice facility a little bit further to the south part of the, that part of the area. So, and both teams will be able to utilize Warwick Vets at night if they have to go in and work on field goals or any of their long practice field work, okay? So that's the football. Field hockey at this time, the plan is for field hockey to practice and play their games at North Country Club Field. Boys and girls soccer practices are scheduled to take place at the Belmont Park Fields, subject to change, and their home games will take place at the Ben Street Fields. I talked, again, I've been working with the Parks and Rec Department, I can't say enough about them, they didn't see it, both Holly Weber and Bev Wiley, I did not see it as a, a school department problem, they saw it as a, a city problem, and they've jumped in and helped with that, and they're actually working to do some improvements at the Belmont Park Fields to have them in shape not only for soccer, but perhaps lacrosse in the future, okay? I've also been told, not, I don't know the extent of the improvements that will be done at the Mickey Stevens Sports Complex for baseball, but I've been told that there will be improvements for the fields so that they'll be usable this spring. The tennis courts at Pilgrim will not be affected this fall. And cross country team will utilize the neighborhood running facilities as they've done in the past, and I guess what I would say to everyone is there is a plan in place, please understand that flexibility is going to be important, nothing's set in stone. There will be some transportation that will have to take place when we're off campus, but it's really not new to many of our teams as we've had to travel to the swimming pool, the ice rink, you know, Tollgate, the lack of facilities at Tollgate, they're used to traveling a little more, it'll be a little bit more challenging for Pilgrim. And that's an update to this day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ricks. Just a few questions, Mr. Ricks, for you?
Yes, of course.
I have three, and then I'll turn it over to my colleagues in case you have any. The first is, you talked about JV teams going from their home school facilities over to the Mickey Stevens Sports Complex. Given that JV players either have their license or do not have their license, and transporting young individuals in their cars possibly a liability, have we budgeted for increased transportation of these JV sports teams from their main facilities to the Mickey Stevens Sports Complex?
So we have not. In fact, the transportation budget was reduced this year to save costs in our initial budget, okay? That was some of the money that was cut, was out of the transportation for athletics. But understand that even if we had the money to do that, the bus company would not be able to transport those teams until after 3:30 to their practice facilities.
So what's the plan for JV teams to go from Pilgrim to Mickey Stevens?
That, that is the plan. Either the coaches are going to have to make an adaptation, whether start at four o'clock, or the kids will have to provide their own, parents will have to provide transportation for the kids to get to those fields.
Okay. My second question for you is, what plans are being developed for Warwick Vets, given that, you know, if you take just Pilgrim for instance, that field is torn apart by the second week of September, given its overuse. So now at Warwick Vets, you're going to be compounding multiple schools to one site, so given that that field is going to see extreme amount of use and torn apart likely by the second or third week of September from its overutilization, possibly presenting an unsafe playing surface, what are we doing proactively as a school department to make sure that it can be sustained each fall?
I really liked that you asked that question, because I forgot to speak to it. Again, by working with the Parks and Recreation directors and be able to play our, all of our spring games off campus, Mr. Oliver and our Buildings and Grounds teams is going to shut off that football field for the spring. They plan on turning it over seeding, overseeding and irrigation to it, so. That should, I mean, on a yearly basis, is something we're all going to have to continue to look at and talk about, but I feel confident that if he's able to do what he plans, that will be in good shape going in at least to the fall of, of next year.
Okay, and the last question for me, this one came from a constituent of mine. With the plans in place, how does this impact other community organizations like Warwick Pal utilizing our outdoor facilities?
Yeah, so Warwick Pal only uses our football fields on five Sundays a year, and at the Warwick Vets Facility, I don't foresee that being a problem. We don't, we don't play any of our games on, on the Sundays anyway, so I don't see them being displaced. Again, we'll have to monitor how well the field holds up over the next few years, but I don't see them as, as being affected.
So if, if the field's getting torn up in mid-season and they've permitted the field on Sundays, would you be revoking their use to make sure the field doesn't continue to get turned up?
I think we'd have to look at everything, and I think this has to be an upfront conversation that has to be had when we, when we get the application again to use those facilities, certainly, yes.
Okay, and I apologize for putting you on the spot there and asking that question, but I just, I feel it's best to be open and honest and upfront with people versus giving them false hope and making them think there's going to be no impact to them. If we see the field's getting, you know, torn up, second week of September, and, you know, we can't accommodate recreational teams outside of our school teams, well, we've got to figure something out, and that might mean no outside use, so I just want to make sure that we're open and honest. That's all I have. Any, any other questions, Mr. Wiggins?
So can I, sorry, new to the microphone. With North Country Club in Aldridge, did the Parks and Rec Department give you any assurances of upgrades there? I know they talked about Belmont as improving, putting improvements.
Yes.
I would say, when I, you think about playing field hockey over at North Country Club and/or the Aldridge campus as it is, the fields that they are.
Right.
There has to be some significant, I would say, upkeep for the.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, that's, that's the city's responsibility. They do have flag football leagues that play at that facility already. Our Pilgrim girls lacrosse team has been practicing there for years. When we ran freshman baseball, they practiced. Again, that's not something I can forecast as to the maintenance part of it, once we, you know, once the field starts getting used. Again, it was like, no, I.
My recommendation, just if you, we were having constant conversations with Parks and Rec, I would actually, you know, keep those fields in those conversations. You know, being a soccer guy, you know, I'm great about Belmont and what they're doing over there, but, you know, I've, you know my experience at, at North Country Club and.
I do, I do, I do. And, and you know, as we talk about that, I'm really glad you're asking these questions, because I think it's, it's being, like as Mr. Galligan said, being upfront with the public. I think that's what everybody, they may not agree with it, but they have to understand that we are going to be displaced, we're going to get a good product in about four years, and they're going to, the people are going to have these, these state-of-the-art facilities that they were hoping to have, that we haven't had, because to be honest, they haven't been happy with our facilities, the public and the sports teams, in a while, our own facilities. But it's going to, we're going to have to take a step back to take a few steps forward, and we're going to have to be understanding that there are going to be challenges, and we may have to pivot and make adjustments, and, you know, I can't tell the future, and I, and I don't, the one part with my job that I don't control is I don't control any of the maintenance of any facilities. I'm at the mercy of who's going to maintain the facilities. So these are all conversations that certainly we all need to be on the same team and having, you know, regular conversations about and monitoring facilities, and we do some of that now, and, you know, and a lot is cost dependent. You know, do we have money in the budget to do certain improvements and to maintain stuff? But that's, that's not really, not my realm of expertise.
Do you yield, Mr. Wiggins?
I yield.
Thank you. Any other members of the committee? Mr. Testa?
Thank you, Mr. J, Mr. Ricks, thank you. And I think, I think what's clear in your remarks is that there's a plan in place, and obviously, it, it can and probably will change, but as far as the maintenance, I, I think that's a perfect opportunity for, for us to work with, with Parks and Rec, like you have been doing. Because, you know, to just expect, well, it's the school departments, you've got an extraordinary situation here, right, for three or four years. So I think to expect the school departments building a maintenance division to do it all might be a tall ask, right? So, you know, I think it's an opportunity for us to try to partner with the city, because they have resources too with Parks and Rec, so, you know, and again, it's one city, so I, I wouldn't, I couldn't foresee that not happening, so.
Well said. Any other members of the committee? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Ricks. Don't go too far.
I'm not.
Might be questions.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Seeing that there's no other matters of business before this committee tonight, we're now on to the public comment period of our meeting. Individual comments will be respectfully limited to five minutes per person. Time is not transferable from one member of the public to another. Though the content of comments will not be restricted, members of the panel and school committee will only respond to items which are on the agenda. It is the hope of this committee that citizens, committee members, and the administration alike will be respectful of each other's right to speak, tolerant of different points of view, and mindful of everyone's time. So that's my little spiel there. Anyone who's wishing to speak from the public, you can come up to the microphone when that individual leaves, you know, feel free for the next person to step on up. Over here to the left, we have a microphone for our, our professionals and experts that are serving as our panel this evening, so they'll field the questions from over here. I have a timer, I will stop it while the question is being responded to, but again, five minutes of time in totality, so. Any members of the public wishing to speak? Any members of the public wishing to speak? Please just state your name for the record.
Thank you Chairman Galligan and members of the school committee. My name's Armin Lucy, L-U-S-I. I live in Warwick, I work in Warwick, I have good investment property in Warwick. My first question is, would be to, to the architects or to the third-party estimator regarding the cost of the project labor agreement? Is anyone there that can answer that for me?
Could, Chris, can you take that?
So.
Thank you.
Are you asking the cost of the study that was completed, the cost of the legal study that was completed?
No, I'm asking when the architect at one of our school committee meetings said that it could be a 5% to 10% increase to use a project labor agreement. That would be $14 to $28 million. Now, I think that's a little high, spending my entire career as a, as a union contractor. So I'm curious as to why we are entertaining a project labor agreement. Why are we reducing the number of companies can do this, this work for us? It doesn't make any fiscal sense. So that's my first comment. My second comment is, I would hope that we don't start any construction until Dimeo Construction, who's a fine contractor, he's one of the best, until we have a guaranteed maximum price with no escape hatches to grab more money. I think that the price that you're estimating, the $704 and $764, is way low. It's way too low. This job's going to go $425,450 million. Now, you can say I'm wrong, but unless we have it locked in before that April start date for Tollgate and the May start date for Pilgrim, then, then we shouldn't, we shouldn't do it. You know, the city council, the city council just ratified three union contracts yesterday, and what they did is, they made the unfunded liability bigger. They didn't cut anything, they didn't get any concessions from the unions, and I was a union contractor, I had agreements with the coppers and laborers. So we're going backwards. We don't have the money to do this job. We simply don't. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Rob Cody, Warwick resident, certified structural inspector, been inspecting schools for 30 years. So I have some questions. What's the total square footage of the schools today?
I'd like to pass that question along to the design team to give you an accurate. Steve, if you want to take Tollgate, Katie, if you want to take Pilgrim.
There we go. Tollgate High School is at 197,000 square feet.
Was that existing or proposed?
No, proposed, the new construction.
Proposed, yeah, 204,000 for Pilgrim.
So we basically cut down the schools from what was proposed and sold to the city that they voted on by 103,000 square feet. I think that's considerable. So I remember Chris Spiegel saying that Tollgate was designed, and then they had to redesign 75% of it. What was the cost of the redesign? We, we paid the architects to design it, then they found the ledge and the, and the wetlands, and then we paid them to redesign it. What was the cost associated with that?
So I'll dispute that I ever said it was a 75% redesign. It's been a substantial redesign, I don't know the exact percentage, Mr. Cody. I believe most of the cost of the redesign was covered within the architectural contract. However, there was a change order that was presented and approved by, to the school building committee of approximately, I don't know the exact number off the top of my head, but I think it was around $250,000.
So was that because they didn't do the proper investigations on the ledge prior to that?
No, I don't believe that's, that's the case. We vetted the change order, we presented it to school building committee, there were some negotiations that took place of what we felt was already owned by the architects and what was new scope of work to adjust to the changing conditions of the site, and we believe that it was warranted at, at that price. It was negotiated in a school building committee meeting, though.
Okay. How many tons of steel are on the project?
I'll defer that question to the design team and the structural engineer. Lance, you up?
Roughly at this stage, at Tollgate, we are, you know, major structural framing around 1,000 tons, 1,000 to 1,100 tons, in that range.
And Pilgrim?
Pilgrim is about 1,100 tons as well. We just issued a set of drawings, we have not. We just issued a set of drawings, we have not completed our takeoff on that side.
Is it a moment frame building?
They're predominantly brace frames stabilizing the building with some moment frames added for drift control and serviceability.
So no seismic framing on the building?
No, it is all seismic framing.
And is it a stage four?
Risk category three with a R equals three, which is a steel system not specifically detailed for seismic resistance, which is very common for pretty much any building here in the Northeast.
Is it gonna be stage, category four shelter, either one of them?
We were not aware of any risk category four requirements for the building, so we were risk category three.
Okay. Are there plans for the school department to ensure that a Corey program is instituted?
So if you're asking about specifically background, for those that don't know, you're talking about background checks, Mr. Cody?
Yes.
Both left field and Dimeo have Corey programs that we enforce on our job sites.
Great. So one thing that I noticed, between the floors, you have like an open railing system. And I'm concerned about liability and in all the school projects that I've ever been a part of, I've never seen where in between floors overlooking, you just have like a hand railing system. It's typically a glass facade, so I think there's a security or a safety issue more or less, because it's high schools and, you know, I know if it was me back there in the high school, I'd be throwing water bombs down the side and spitballs and disrupting everybody, because, you know, they're kids, right?
It's a guard rail system, not a handrail system.
Oh God, but it's still like, what, 40, 42 inches, correct?
Yep, and it meets code, so it's been fully vetted by our code consultant.
But the, there's also, as you probably saw in the drawings, that there's multiple points of teacher supervision. Administration is not located in one section of the building, it's now located throughout the building, which allows administrators and teachers to have, especially the teacher planning areas, which is Pilgrim specifically, and Tollgate are both located, are all located along that central spine. That gives a lot more eyes, you know, your administrators and your teachers aren't tucked away, they're throughout the building, which allows better supervision to keep eyes of things going on. And of course, the security, the specific security systems, obviously I can't get into, but there are cameras throughout the school.
Yeah, just things happen real quickly and anything that you can do to enhance safety, I, I'm just not comfortable with that. Like I say, in all the schools that I've overseen the inspection on, I, I've never seen that, so that, that's new to me. Here's a question, how much money is being allocated to temporary heat? Right now, one of the projects, Hamon, we're using $24,000 a week temporary heat. I didn't see any money in any of the budgets for temporary heat.
I'll defer that to Dan O'Connell from Dimeo, who's, leads the preconstruction department. Dan, what are we caring for temp conditions specifically for heat?
So we actually have it distributed in between each of the different divisions. So within concrete, we have temporary heat, hot water, add mixtures during the concrete portions, and then we're also allocating money towards the masonry of the facades. And then, once the building becomes operational with the mechanical equipment, we do plan on utilizing the existing, the new equipment that's going into the building to heat and temper the building as we're finishing construction. And we do have money allocated within that for filter changes, airflow changes and the whole commissioning process as we go through to final turnover.
So my question was, how much is being allocated?
If you take all of it across the board, we're probably somewhere between $750,000, somewhere near there.
Okay.
That's a great question to submit to the website, so we can give you an exact answer.
Mr. Cody.
I have to ask this question because all my neighbors are asking the same thing and I'm sure I'm probably not gonna get any answer, but people wanna know, what's the term, what's the term in the interest on the bond? What's the total payback of the project with interest and what will be the impact on the tax rate?
Mr. Cody, I'm gonna pause some of your time. Those are questions for the city, so I just don't want you to waste your time on that.
All right, I, I just thought it would be important that everybody knows that.
Absolutely, sir, and I, I respect your line of questioning, I just wanted to protect your remaining two minutes here and that, that's a city question, they put the bonds out to sale.
So, and, and this question, I mean no disrespect for this question, and this is not a personal attack, but it begs the question, right? Given the fiscal challenges that the Walk School Department has been up against, which are not uncommon and they are not new, how can the members of the, the general public and the taxpayers in Walk be confident that this project will go off in a coordinated fashion, on time and on budget, with no situations like we saw five days ago? And, and I have the utmost faith in, in the engineering team and the architects, but from a management point of view, we have a history of, of, of not coming in on time and on budget, so I'm concerned about that. Because I pay a lot of taxes and, you know, this is my home, it's been my home for 65 years. So what, what, what has been implemented to keep an eye on things within house, not, not with you guys?
Okay. I, I know that the question is not directed to left field, but I, I will say that we have an excellent track record. So far, we have come in on budget and on time with all of the early enabling work that we've done at the CTC building in preparation for this work. And we're keeping very, very close eyes, like I said, we have a team of five staff members assigned to this project to ensure that everything, and then of course, the transparency that you see by coming to these meetings and showing budgets and showing our dates so that we can respectfully hear comments like yours, Mr. Cody, and adjust as we go. We, we're fully aware that the only way a project like this is successful is through a partnership between the city and the school department, and we're making sure to involve them and their AHJs and every opportunity possible to make sure everybody knows what one hand is doing when construction starts and as we lead up prior to construction.
And Mr. Cody, before you say anything else, I, I think you have something to say and also the superintendent, I believe, has a comment as well.
Thanks, Mr. Cody, I would just, I think you have to look at the track record on the $40 million and $56 million bond work. The $40 million bond work, we actually did more projects than we had actually anticipated because a lot of those jobs came in on the budget. The $56 million was a little bit more of a challenge because of inflation, especially in HVAC systems. But overwhelmingly, those projects, past projects have come in on time and on budget and have been well managed, so I, I'm, that's not a concern for me, truly. I think between left field, between their work, and I think, I think that the building committee and then the school committee can oversee that, but most of that is gonna be run by the OPM anyway, right? So we trust them, we trust Dimeo, we trust the, the other professionals that they've enlisted for this, so I, I'm confident that the project can go off on time.
Well, I know, Mr. Testa, you always say.
One second, Mr. Cody. Respectfully, your time still hasn't been restarted. So you've heard from the OPM and from the chair of the building committee and superintendent Danbrook also has a response to that question.
Good evening, Mr. Cody. The school is working, the school department is working in coordination with Ride, our OPM, Building Subcommittee, which has members of the public that serve on that, serve on that committee, so we're confident that our finances will, will all work together.
So I, I know on the building committee, Mr. Testa, you have said a million times, not a penny more. So are you committed tonight that no matter what takes place in this project, this project will not go back to the taxpayers for a penny more than $350 million? We need, we need that assurance.
You, you know, that's a promise that I can't make. I, I, as a building committee chair, as one of eight members of that committee, I can't, I can't make a promise that it won't be 300, a penny more than 350. I've said that, and I've said that in part to, to make sure that the message was pretty clear, that we had to get absolutely as close to budget as possible. Now, we have to be a realist too, right? When you get a $350 million figure developed in 2022 and then you start to actually do the project, I mean, I kept saying 350, 350. And at the end of the day, if, if the project comes in at 361 or 365 or whatever it is, I would still consider that a success, but ultimately, it, it'll be up to the community to decide if, if that extra is something that they want to support. But I, I would, I would say that the work that was done by, that has been done by Dimeo and, and left field and Sakoshio and Sam, to get this from the 37.8, which we were talking about in October, and I said then, I thought that that number wasn't realistic because it was, the, the numbers were coming down, but to do what they did, to not compromise a single programmatic issue, a programmatic want or need that was developed back in 2018, I think is, is yeoman's work. And I think that in any other city or town, I, I think that would be celebrated. So, no, I'm not gonna, I'm not, I don't have the power to say if it can't be 350, then it doesn't proceed. That's not my call. That's the community's call, that's the city's call.
That also was the language in the bond referendum, remember that?
Understood.
Not to exceed 350 million. So that's why we need a guaranteed maximum price, right?
Thirty seconds.
The last question that I had is, has there been any talk, I'm hearing things from the community, has there been any, any talk about repurposing product or equipment from the old schools to bring them into the new schools? And if so, what, what would be those products and the equipment?
So happy to take that. We're actually doing a full inventory of furniture fixtures and equipment to see what we can bring into the new school to hopefully reduce that FFNE budget and put more money either back into your pockets or back into the project, depending on how it's needed. We are doing a, a full inventory where the architectural team is, is working hard at it. We have a substantial FFNE budget, but we're, we're pinching pennies here, Mr. Cody. We're trying to squeeze every last little bit of blood out of this stone.
Great. Thanks a lot for your time.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public wishing to comment?
Hi, my name is Robin Kardnis. I'd like to address Mr. Testa if you could. I'm wondering if we do go over budget. What is the plan? Are you coming back to the taxpayers?
I'll take that question. So the school committee in 2022 presented a bond through a voter referendum, and it was for $350 million. So if we were to go over $350 million on this project, which tonight, it appears that that is the case, then the project, if we require additional funding, would have to go back to, like that additional amount, we would have to request that of the voters.
Would this be before construction starts or during, or how is that going to happen?
Mr. Testa, you want to?
Thank you. I, I think, I think you would need to have a commitment from the city, right? So it's, we will, we do talk to the city regularly, so once we get a final number in, if it, again, I'm gonna use the number 366, I'm just pulling that out of thin air. So if it's $366 million, then, then I think that the city, the administration has to decide, are they gonna be willing to pursue this or not? And, you know, from what we sit, common sense says we, we need an actual commitment. If there's no commitment, then you start putting shovels in the ground, you'll end up like we ended up with Tollgate, where there was no money for an auditorium and it waited 20 years. I don't think anybody wants to see a repeat of that. But I think at the end of the day, if, if whatever that delta is, if it's relatively minor, if, if you're talking a four or five percent extra cost on a $350 million project, and you still get everything that, essentially every single thing that we had on our conceptual design, I think there's a, a very plausible argument to make to the community to go forward and do that. But ultimately, it'd be the community that decides, but before they can decide, I think this, the, the city, whether it's the mayor and the, and the council, has to, has to make a decision as to yes, we're gonna, we'd be willing to pursue that or no. But I think they'd want a firmer number before they made that call.
Correct. So my next question is to Dimeo Construction. Would the proposed.
Excuse me, could you, I paused your time. Could you just get a little closer to the microphone, just so we can hear?
If we do taxes on goods coming from elsewhere, how is that gonna affect your prices? With woods coming from Canada, say, steel?
We specifically talking about, about tariffs?
Yeah.
So we're keeping a very close eye on the market. We do have allowances built into our unit numbers.
25%?
And we've got contingencies built into the project specifically for, in all cases though, we do our best to make sure that everything is purchased right here in the United States of America, and we do our best to specify products that are already in stock with manufacturers and don't have to be fabricated offsite or in other countries. If, we will, we will adjust as needed if, if those tariffs are implemented and to what effect they might have on public construction projects that are taxpayer funded like ours. As legal challenges play out, you can almost certainly, as you've seen with most of the executive orders that have taken place, they are all have been halted due to legal action that takes place. Legal action takes a substantial amount of time. It's just another reason why we don't wanna take our foot off the gas and why we're being as aggressive as possible to get our products on schedule, get our products ordered prior to any tariffs taking place. So it's, it's absolutely in our minds and you're right to be concerned about it, we are looking at it too, very closely.
Okay, well, thank you then.
Thank you very much.
Hi, Brian Napa City Work. Just a couple of questions. You, do we have a terminal date for when your final cost is gonna be submitted to the building committee and Mr. Testa?
The, the guaranteed maximum price?
Yes.
So the guaranteed maximum price is gonna take effect over the course of multiple amendments to what's, what's currently in place. So we, in order to keep this project on schedule, we're doing what's called early release packages, which means that we will bid out specific portions of this work prior to the full body of work being bid out, which allows us to keep our schedule, so. You'll have a beginning price for four divisions of work, let's say, just as an example, so you'll have a price for your steel, your foundations, your underground utilities, things like that, that are at the front end of the project, and as we bid out the rest of the work, that price will come in. So there'll be two different, there'll be different mechanisms for how, how much is approved at what point, but it both needs to go before the school building committee for their approval.
So the answer to my question was no? You have no idea when you're gonna have a final number?
I can't give you an exact date about when the GMP is, requires on.
So if we're gonna break ground.
Approval from Ride, approval from the town council is required, approval from the school building committee is required. There's multiple variables that I can't give you an exact.
So are you proposing to break ground before we know what the exact maximum cost is gonna be?
Excuse me, a breakdown?
Are you proposing to break ground on these projects before we know what the exact maximum guaranteed cost?
You will know what the exact price of the work that we're proposing break ground on, you will know that exact price. So let's say we're breaking ground with the civil package, you will know exactly what that civil package costs prior to, prior to bidding.
So we're gonna be already into the project, there's a digging for the foundation before we know what the final cost is gonna be for this project? So we're gonna be into it and we're gonna eat whatever that final cost is gonna be? Is that what I'm hearing?
So that is if we proceed with the early, early release package date, which we have been instructed to do, that is how you keep the project moving forward, keep it on time and on budget. If we were to wait, let's say, another, I don't know, Dimeo, how long do we need before all packages are wrapped up and we can bid out? So 100% CDs are 324, so that's when we're gonna have all of the bidding completed and we'll be negotiating a guaranteed maximum price, so around the time of groundbreaking is when we're expected to have a full guaranteed maximum price brought before the committee.
But prior to, prior to groundbreaking?
Could be, could be a day or two, I mean, we're, I don't have an exact date.
We have to come back to city council to ask for more money. We would presume that we're gonna do that before the ground breaks.
We would have to come back, and that's why we're presenting this budget today, to say, this is the budget, it has a healthy contingency, Dimeo has signed off on the numbers, this is the amount of money that we need to feel comfortable to move forward. It could be less than that, we don't, but that's again, why I don't wanna give my contingency up, so that in case, let's say on bid day, our steel package comes in $400,000 higher than we estimated, I've got $17 million to cover that $400,000 overage. It's a protection, a risk management tool that we use on the job.
So speaking to your contingency, I noticed earlier in your presentation that you had alluded to the fact that if the contingency was used and you were still exceeding what the guaranteed, or you're projecting to exceed what the guaranteed maximum price would be during construction, you would have to revisit the construction plan to see where you could get that money from. So let's just speculate that we're going through construction, costs are exceeding what you expected, you used up your contingency. Is the construction team, Dimeo, your company as the PM, going to absorb the overage? Or are you gonna go back, can I finish? Or are you gonna go back to then redesign to cut things from the building plan to make up for those shortfalls?
So that's a, that's not how a guaranteed maximum price contract works, so. A guaranteed maximum price means that Dimeo has, looks at their numbers, they bid out the entire work, they sign with us a guaranteed maximum price for that cost. As long as it's not unforeseen conditions or owner added scope, that's on them to bring the project in on that, that's what we are paying them a fee for. That's where they absorb the risk, that's the whole risk management of this, is that once they sign that guaranteed maximum price, it is on Dimeo to bring that project in for the price that they told us, with the exception of unforeseen conditions, which we have our contingency for. the exception of unforeseen conditions, which we have our contingency for, or owner-added scope, but I doubt the owner's gonna be adding any scope to this project where we currently...
Just to clarify for the taxpayers and people that may be watching from home, barring any unforeseen circumstance where maybe we find some unbuildable ground underneath when we break ground, or any scope changes, which I find unlikely, there can be no cuts to what the final proposed projects are.
Once we sign the guaranteed, so you're, you're signing a price for a scope of work? Exactly. You're signing a price for a scope of work.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. And I just wanna take a moment to recognize, I did not turn around here, but I do wanna welcome councilman from Ward III, Councilman Napa. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I think I have two minutes left. Armin Lucy, LUSI, Ward Nine. Mr. Spiegel, I object to you sticking the camel's nose under the tent so you can break ground, and then, oh, we guarantee the site work, we guarantee the concrete. You're not doing a thing. You're not putting a spoon in the ground until the 100% CD is done and a GMP is done.
Mr. Lucy, if I could, I respect you, sir, but we're, we're not keeping track of everyone's time here, so I respect that you, you came up, you maybe didn't use your full five minutes, but I'm not keeping a running log of how much time.
He made an assertion that we were gonna start by a separate...
I understand, sir.
And I just know my strong objection to that.
Understood, Mr. Lucy. Thank you. I just didn't wanna get it out of hand, and people think that they have remaining time they could come back to the mic. I'm sorry, Mr. Cody, I'm not, I'm not keeping track of everyone's time. I do find your humor good, but I, I'm sorry. If you wanna come up here and take notes for me, you could do it, but they're all at the door trying to get in. I apologize. Mr. Midori has the microphone. Thank you.
Jacob Midor, Ward resident, Ward graduate, Tollgate T-shirt. I have a few questions regarding the classroom and T-shirt spaces. First of all, if my recollection and memory serves, I counted 23 core classrooms on Tollgate. Is that about right?
I believe there are 20 core classrooms.
Okay. So, that would presumably mean all teachers would be traveling, or the vast majority of teachers should be traveling?
Yes, we have teacher hubs where the teachers are gonna call their home within the buildings, so they don't own a classroom in these spaces.
So, no teacher would be owning a classroom? Is that correct?
Correct. They won't own a classroom. They'll be sharing classrooms.
With that said, what would these T-shirt hubs look like? Because we've seen the classrooms, we've seen the common areas, we've seen the athletic fields. What do the teachers' hub looks like, and what does the storage situation look like? And I say this not for selfish reasons, but I say this because teachers need, have materials, especially when we're moving away from shock and talk and we're moving into 24th century learning, hands-on. English teachers need props when they're acting their plays. Math teachers and special ed teachers want manipulatives, and if teachers don't have an adequate storage, forged said materials, that will affect the academic of this, that the students are receiving. So, what does the storage situation look like?
It depends on what, what room is designated for what...
No, in the teachers' hubs.
So, in the teacher hubs, we have teacher workstations, we have storage, and we have casework, a sink, and sitting areas, so where they can do their work.
And I say this because I looked at the, the Tollgate faculty is pretty big, and there were only a few T-shirt hubs, and they look pretty small. And thus concerning, I just wanna put that out on the record, because especially at the high school level, you have what one, it's not like in the middle school when one teacher is teaching one class. At high school, you could have free four preps with free four sets of materials that you need at any given point on the same day. Are you confident that there's gonna be enough room from East T-shirt to have multiple filing cabinets for their materials?
Well, we followed the program. The program called for approximately 400 to 600 square feet, and most of ours are 600 to 700 square feet.
So, what does the program for public, I don't know what the program entails, so...
So, it's hard to describe in words. If you'd like, we can certainly blow up the teacher planning spaces, there are multiple of them. And we can give those to you so that you can take a look at what the casework is and things like that. Can we work on that? Because...
Yeah, we, we actually just finished the layouts for those rooms with our FFNE consultant, so we can provide those, but we do have, you know, six to 10 workstations in each, each teacher hub with adequate...
And each teacher would own a workstation, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And again, I just wanna say again, this is important because teachers have materials. This isn't a college professor for shock board going from class to class. They have materials, decades worth of materials, many of my colleagues do, that they need to effectively do their jobs, and if they don't have space to store those materials, that is gonna affect the education of the students.
Understood. And we have also storage cabinets going in all the classrooms, and we also have a storage room in each learning community for the classrooms.
All right. Thank you.
If I, Chairman Gallagher, if I might just provide a date, the...
No, you may not. I'm just kidding. Go ahead.
Okay. There was a question about, about GMP dates, and we just wanna, to be clear, so for exact dates on our schedule right now, we're looking at submitting our guaranteed maximum price for Pilgrim on 5/20. Obviously, we break ground right around that date, GMP approval on 5/27, but we don't start digging for our foundations until 6/3. So, it's, it is, we're keeping the camel's nose out of the tent. That was the expression, right? Okay.
Special guest speaker tonight?
Hello, Darlene Netco, lifelong resident of Warwick and graduate of Warwick Public Schools, so I'm glad we're getting a new school. I graduated from Tollgate. It was built without an auditorium. It was built without a football field. I was in the band in high school, so I got to ride a bus to all of our home games at Warwick Vets, so I guess we're doing that again. But I wanna follow up with what my colleague was saying, because I am concerned about this situation where no one is going to have a classroom. As it is, not everyone has a classroom, but in each department, there might be one or two people without a classroom, and they travel. If you are having everybody travel, I hope you have an awful lot of carts. I teach English. I teach a lot of novels that involves a lot of moving books in and out of the classroom. So, if I've got, say, five classrooms that I'm going to, and with all of my books, it's not gonna work. And right now, for English, we have three different bookroom spaces that we're using just for all of our tens and hundreds of thousands of books, and I'm not exaggerating when I say we probably have, I should count sometime, but hundreds and thousands of books. The teacher hub situation, as I said, not everybody has a classroom now, but most teachers do at least have that as a home base. We have, I think, about 32 special ed teachers at Tollgate. We've got 16 English teachers. We've got at least probably 14 math, 14 social studies teachers. I don't think you've accounted enough for the number of classrooms that we need and the amount of storage that we need and the amount of workspace that we need. I think it's a mistake to have this hub idea as opposed to what we have now for classrooms. I have a question about the groundbreaking. At Tollgate, we have been forced, we teachers have been forced to park behind the Career Center, walk up a very long set of stairs that's getting longer as the weather gets colder and the weather gets more inclement. Some of us are getting on in years. I've been teaching 37 years, so I'm, you know, I'm getting pretty old. And if we don't need to be parking down there, because you're not breaking ground till June, we teachers, and I'm speaking not just for myself, but I hear this every day from my colleagues, we would appreciate being able to park behind the school again, so we don't have to make that walk every morning up all those stairs with all of our materials. If kids are gonna be playing sports back there, I can tell you right now, and this is, this is what has brought the comment to the fore again, my colleagues are kind of upset that the kids are gonna be back there and we're down behind the school. So, I would, if, if truly groundbreaking isn't happening until June, we need to be able to park back behind the school, so we can have an easy, you know, enter and exit from the building. Oh, earlier in one of these meetings, there was talk about glass walls for classrooms, and there was talk, if we didn't have the glass walls, the cost would be cheaper. Are the glass walls still part of the classrooms? Because I hope not.
We have reduced the interior glazing, which is our technical term for it, by over 25%. So, it's no longer these large glass panels, it is more strategically placed, I should say, to allow for daylight to come into the building without providing large, very open glass containers.
Yeah, because the, this concern wasn't just cost, it was also safety.
That's, that's what I'm getting. I hope I got, I hope I was able to say that, that the way, the glass is more strategically placed as opposed to large panel sheets, and it has been shrunk. Your comments about security also allowed us to save money, so it was a win-win for the budget.
Okay. And because you, and there's also the distraction factor, because as Mr. Cody was mentioning before, kids are apt to do things, they're kids, their brains aren't fully functioned, fully formed yet, and they're not thinking all the time, and they are liable to do some things that are not appropriate, and making faces in the window and trying to distract others would be less of a concern probably than throwing things off a, over a balcony or something to...
Thirty seconds.
One more. I haven't met anyone currently teaching at Tollgate who likes the idea of that learning stair. I don't know if we need the learning stair, and maybe getting rid of the learning stair might save some money. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Netco.
Good evening, Sean Rainey. I love the new Pilgrim High School. I wish it was there in 1990, '89. It would've been great. As far as these renderings that are up here now, I know it doesn't show any lights, but you are gonna have lights on the football stadium?
Yes, we do.
Lights on the baseball softball field?
No, no lights on the baseball softball field.
Okay.
In the current plan.
Mr. Tester.
Mr. Rainey, in our stage two submission to RIDE, we didn't have lights on the baseball and softball fields. The only light, the only fields that were lit were football fields. That was from the, the original concept up to today.
Well, seeing that we're in budget deficit and looking for money in the future, that those fields could be used. I know you don't, I know, Mr. Tester, we talked about this, you don't wanna be a revenue generator, you wanna be a revenue generating school committee, but you don't wanna be a generating school committee. It's, if you need money, renting these spaces out to outside companies or places, there's plenty of baseball organizations looking for fields, there's plenty of softball organizations looking for, for fields. It's a way to bring in some revenue for the city. I know you guys aren't built for that, but it's, it could be a possibility in the future. 21st century education, maybe we think about that in the future on our school committee and our school administration, and we think about what can we do to bring in some money that will help out our, whatever our deficit is. What is the cost for just the building and not the athletic facilities?
Hey, Sean.
Hi.
We're becoming friends now. You've come to enough of these. I don't have that answer for you directly in front of me. I can get it for you by tomorrow, though. If you, I'll just, do you mind if I just text you it, or would you like me to put it on the website?
Whatever you want.
Could you put it on the website? I think that's a question many in the public would be interested in.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Only, I only ask that because we are in the second or third biggest city with the airport, Breeze Airways, JetBlue, Southwest, all these organizations that have some capital money that they could maybe help donate. I know in West, in Cranston West, they, when they built a new football complex, they had people donate money, they put signs up on the fence. If, if, if we know what it's gonna cost or what we don't have for the, for the athletic facilities, because, let's be honest, the athletic facilities are the last to be built, and that'll be the last thing that you guys can cut. That'll be, all your education stuff is great, but when it comes to athletics, we're losing a lot of kids to other cities and towns because of athletic facilities. The other question I had was, this new gymnasium basketball facility, is it gonna be a hardwood floor? Is it gonna be, how, I know you, I think it said 96 feet. That's high school regulation. Would it cost a heck of a lot more to do five feet on each end for, to make it a NCAA basketball regulated?
So, it, so, what we're, so, hey, Sean, again. So, yeah, it's a, currently, it's a high school regulation basketball court. It's not an NCAA basketball court. I think when we're talking about budget deficits, where we're talking about budget deficits, having an NCAA court is a nice-to-have. We're trying to give you everything that, that you need. Adding five feet around an 86-foot perimeter is a significant amount of square feet. As for the material choices, Katie, and we're talking, it's, it's wood floors, it's six, six, obviously one full size, two smaller size.
Right.
So, six hoops, 750 seats?
Close to 800.
Close to 800 seats.
Okay. You just got to my next question.
We, I saw the pictures from last night's game.
I've gone to every home Pilgrim basketball game, and every game has been packed, more than what, I mean, last night was overpacked, and I heard the excuse that, oh, it was a rivalry game, in cities, in city rivalry game, that, you know, we'll never get that many people in there. I beg to differ. I go to every basketball game there. Maybe the girls have less people, but the boys always have full crowds. And for safety reasons, you got fans from other towns, you know how crazy fans are these days, you got fans from other towns mixing in with fans from the home school, and God forbid you say something wrong, and it's gonna, it could turn into a fiasco. So, that extra space, we need. We definitely need that extra space in the gymnasium.
Thanks, Sean.
Thank you.
You take over the meeting. That's how that works.
I'm sorry. Is there anyone else for public comment or questions? Anyone else for public comment or questions? Third time, anyone for public comment or questions? Okay. Any other questions from anyone on the committee? Okay. Hearing none, I'd be looking for a motion to adjourn. Moved by Mr. Wiggins, seconded by Ms. Hazelwood. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Or adjourned. Thank you for coming out. Thank you for everybody who came. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Gallagher.
That's what happens when you leave for a second, Sean.